Thank you. Okay, well, we're gonna get things going. We have another meeting following this one, so we're gonna try and keep things on schedule. So, welcome to the Puntin School Committee Meeting for Monday, September 23rd. This is being recorded for informational purposes and it's not considered a public record. So, I'd like to welcome our audience members. So, Ms. Sylvester and Mrs. Kidd, thank you for joining us. We'll try and keep it somewhat entertaining as much as we can since we're just gonna talk a little bit about water, which is Peter's favorite topic. Shouldn't we watch him suffer in pain over there? So, take my...
Okay.
No worries. So, just diving in, we had minutes for July 15th, which was our last meeting. Did folks have a chance to take a peek at those?
We mentioned to accept the minutes from the July 15, 2019 meeting.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Okay. I had no correspondence to the townhouse.
I had no number.
Okay, great. Look at that. Right there, three ayes. I don't have any new business on the agenda, so just into unfinished business. Playground?
So, Peter and I met a couple of times over the summer. Unfortunately, a vendor that we originally had been working with over the course of several years, when we made some requests to make the playground more adaptable to students and variety of needs, never got back in touch with us after repeated phone calls and emails. Principal Bowdre from the Halifax Elementary School has put us in touch with the company that did their playground, not to be confused with the Hops playground on the top of the hill. They also did a playground down behind their school. They have come out and talked with Peter. We're still looking at some of their pricing and some of their ideas of what they could do with this playground. But I really think that Peter and I are at the point that we feel we might need to look at either putting out an RFP to see if we can get more attention. We're kind of grinding our wheels on this one plus trying to attend to our other duties as a principal and as a school committee member and not getting a lot of traction or call back with the companies that can do these types of work for us. So, we're open to any advice, any suggestions that the administration or other school committee members have to try and garner a little bit more attention in that project.
So, as I understood it, the last... The company that gave us the initial quote, they were on the state bid list.
They are.
So, is there a list of companies that are on that list for this purpose? And have we kind of used that as a...
I've never seen a list of companies that are on the state bid list for playground installation.
Do you know which list there are? Do you know what the... There's usually a number...
I have a series of numbers for their proposals. I can email them to you.
Okay. It may be on there which state bid list there are. And if it is on there, I could look up to see if I could find the actual state bid list and then find who the other vendors are.
Yeah, because I'm not adverse to putting out an RFP. I guess that's just a whole nother process as far as time and all of that. Whereas if we have a list and there's... Let's say there's a handful of other vendors on there that might be worth reaching out to them directly to try and cut that time down.
That is absolutely not something that we had considered. So, that's a great idea. That's exactly what we're hoping for, that maybe we could brainstorm some ideas to get a lead.
And I think we're... I'm also... So, if that doesn't lead anywhere, you know, we have our next meeting in November, I think, right?
Yes.
November.
First Monday of November.
I'm also not adverse to then just proceeding with putting out an RFP. And, you know, I'm happy to help.
And we also... I mean, I know that I've reached out to one consultant down on the Cape who expressed interest in taking the project on. And we had hesitated at first to see if we could handle it ourselves. I have no problem going back to her or other consultants to see if they're interested now, even if I have to go a little hat in hand to apologize for, you know, not having corresponded with her in quite some time. So, I'm not above that at all either.
So, I think at the last meeting, we pretty much had already voted to give you and Peter a pretty free hand to get this thing moving. And so, I think that's still on the table. So, I guess we're gonna have a good six weeks or so before our next meeting. And I don't want to hold that up.
So, it's been some time since we've taken a vote to authorize Peter and myself to actually allocate some of the funds towards anything. Would it be prudent for us to take a vote now, tonight, giving us permission, if needed, to allocate some funds to a consultant after we've tried cold calling some of the people on the state bid list?
Do you have an idea of how much?
I wouldn't want that to exceed $10,000. I'm hoping it would be less than that, but that would be a good ceiling for us to work potentially if we need to go the consulting route. Again, hopefully, that's not the course of action we'll have to take. We never even considered looking at the state bid list that way and trying to find vendors from the list.
Well, I've undertaken a motion to not to exceed...
Ten.
To hire a consultant if need be.
So moved.
Good second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And my assumption is that we also have some... That we don't have to wait till the summer to do this. I mean, we can't do it in the middle of winter. But we can... We should be able to make things work if we need to get that put in.
The only complication that Peter and I have come across potentially with weather is putting down the rubber matting. They do need a certain temperature for a good pour on their rubber, but it's not a ridiculous temperature. We could absolutely do an installation during the school year if it worked with Peter's schedule and he could manage it with the students' needs as well.
So, we have some flexibility. And I think that's the important thing for folks to understand, both here as well as out there. We're gonna get it done, but we're gonna do it right and find the right people to do it.
We're very thankful to have the opportunity and we realize this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the school. We want to make sure that we're using the funds in a prudent manner.
Okay. Thank you. Power lines?
Power lines are where we were at the last meeting. We're on the list, they're aware of it. We had contact with somebody today that sounded like they were willing to work with us. So, we're not a high priority apparently.
Well, they finally are doing some work up on Lake Street. The line's pretty much in the road.
Yeah.
Although, I'm not sure that they've actually moved the lines, but at least they got the trees out of the way. So, you know.
It's a process.
I mean, maybe they're just waiting for the next one to take it down. I'm not sure entirely. Year and a half. All right, water testing. Peter's favorite topic, becoming my favorite topic too. So, I forget... We did talk about it at the last meeting, right? I can forget that. So, just as a long story short, we did the testing and there is not a blood issue with the water. There isn't an issue with the manganese and there isn't an issue with the iron or anything else. Everything actually works. And the best that we can tell... And I did speak with the selectmen, I think, right after our last meeting about that. Best we can tell is that there was an issue in pulling the sample around the time that it was backwashing. And that could have been either when we were running the water or something else was running, i.e. a toilet or a sink was running a little bit and thus pulling that stuff that's supposed to go out the other way into the pipes. And we have that in your own house with these systems too. Someone inadvertently flushes a toilet in the middle of the night and says, "Why is the water smell?" Once it clears out, it's gone. So, I think the... What we're doing here is making sure that when we're pulling the sample, we are not anywhere near those seven-day windows. So, the backwash is every 14 days. We have two units in there. They are offset. So, every seven days, one of the units is backwashing. So, we do not pull a water sample on a backwash day, preferably in the middle. The other thing that, now that I've been pulled into this, we're watching a little more closely is that it appear that every so often, the people testing the water don't necessarily test everything correctly. And we had an incident later in July where one number was swapped in the tube. Everything else lined up properly, but so it makes no sense. So, we're gonna watch and see if that happens again. If it does, we're gonna have a discussion with whoever we need to about who actually pays for that. Because it certainly seemed with all the additional tests that came through that I assumed we were paying for their mistake, which doesn't sit right. So, you have company now, Peter.
Welcome.
So, hopefully, that's the end of our sagas here. But... And then, I think we were just talking beginning of this that, you know, perhaps it makes sense that we reach out to DDP to make sure that we can actually notify the rest of the families officially that that issue that we had isn't there and didn't actually exist. So, that would be ideal, but we'll have to wait and see before we can do that. So, that should be something we should follow up on. Water. Water. Okay. So, standing committees, administrative review. Do we have any meetings since last night?
No.
No? Nothing on negotiations, but that's gonna start up this fall. Right?
We haven't heard from Union yet, but it does expire in June 20th. So, at some point, we'll get a letter and show.
Okay. And then, Union 31. I should probably just give a quick update about what we're doing from a search committee perspective. So, I did attend the first meeting of the, I guess, the... What you call it?
Preliminary screening.
Preliminary screening committee. And so, we went through the whole process. Somebody actually wants your job. We got a bunch of applications, which we get to go through. And we're meeting this week to do an initial talk about that. And then, we're gonna have a slate of screen candidates for the broader committee to look at by, I think, the end of the second week of October. So, it's a pretty tight timeframe. Anyone's looking for me, those first two weeks of October, I will not be anywhere but at the high school. So, it's gonna be quite a run-through, but, you know, the process is moving along and on schedule.
Thanks, Marley.
No problem there for you.
Appreciate it.
So, can I add on to that? So, I'd like to thank everyone who's taken part in the preliminary screening team. I know the amount of time needed to dedicate to the process is extensive, but I also know how important it is that we put time and effort into selecting our next CEO of our very important business, the most important business we have taking care of the children of our community. We will be holding, hopefully, a meeting on October 10th at 6 o'clock to announce the semifinalists at the high school library at 6 o'clock. So, that's October 10th, 6 o'clock in the high school library. I've called for a joint meeting of Silver Lake Regional School and Union 31, but as if not all members of every committee are a member of Union 31, we invited all members of all four committees to be there to hear the announcement of the semifinalists. That will also be the evening where it's announced and decided what the next steps in the process will look like, depending on how well the candidates are known or where they're located. There might be some site visits to other districts occurring and we might be inviting the candidates to our district to do some meet and greets with different constituents and stakeholders in our communities as well. So, that's an important date to hold on to. So, a lot of work to be done between now and October 10th. We do appreciate all the efforts of that team.
It's an important role. Well, I don't know one single role in the whole place that isn't, but it certainly is difficult shoes to fill. All right. PAC?
So, we had one meeting and a fall update from Ms. Thomas. And unfortunately, the building that they were hoping to purchase, a 250 South Meadow Road, did not work out. They had an architect and a realtor do an assessment on the building and they came up with a number. There was a bid and unfortunately, the town clinic was not accepting any bids less than $850,000. And the bid that they were able to give was less than that. So, they were not able to meet in the middle. They are still in pursuit of a building that will fulfill the needs of that school. And they have learned a lot in the process, as we all do. So, it was a positive experience. It just didn't happen to work out for that property.
And then, the other item we have for this committee, Jill is going to be unable to attend meetings for a few months in a little bit of a leave of absence. So, we're gonna... We have a vacancy on PAC till through March, right? So, Amy isn't here. I cannot do the PAC because of my work stuff, because of some stuff that they have responsibilities for. So, we're gonna need to find some level of coverage for that. And Amy not being here, maybe I'll shoot an email out.
We have nominated people when they've been absent.
The punishment?
You win by default, yeah.
So, I don't know, folks have other thoughts?
No.
I would be more than happy to attend if it's a temporary assignment to make sure that the Denet is represented. Well, Jill is on her adventure.
Skipping school, I'd say.
You know, I've always said that being a member of the Board of Directors for PAC is one of the highlights of my tenure as a school committee member and I'd be honored to step in for a few months for it.
Thank you.
So, is that permit to go?
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone have any objections?
No.
You weren't dying to be on yet another thing, no?
Bring me back to you.
The superintendent is... Been off for two years.
Okay. So, why don't we have... Can we just have him as being an alternate and then...
Yep. The temporary appointment. Can I just say she should take a vote just a little?
Sure can. All in favor?
Am I recusing myself from this?
You don't have to.
Okay.
Only if you don't think I should replace you.
All in favor of having Jason serve as a temporary appointment during leave of absence? Aye?
Aye.
You're just lucky my wife doesn't get a vote.
Jill? I'll be gone before she's there. Is it through March?
Through March.
So, from now until March?
Yes.
Yep.
End of March?
Yes. The 22nd and there, March... They have an eight... Let's see. March 5th, they have a meeting. But then, they have another meeting April 2nd, which I'll be back for.
Okay. So, from now till the end of March?
Yeah.
So, it's a... There's a... We'll put out an official letter so that we show the dates, right?
Okay. Excellent.
I think they'll want that.
Yep.
They will. They have to.
Yeah.
And then, for policy, we have a meeting at 6 o'clock here. Just four policies to consider, so not too heavy of a lift. I don't think we have anything for capital improvement. Legislative?
So, the State House didn't come up with a budget by June 30th. We went into continuing budget. But right now, the conference committee has released their agreement on Chapter 70 funding and potentially addressing some of the issues of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. In addition, rural schools seem to be getting a nod with some attention from funding from the state. It is up for discussion right now, going back to both the House and the Senate. It hasn't been voted on yet. So, it seems like education may have earned a win here in the last innings of 2019, but it's still too early to give any news about exactly how it might impact us. So, stay tuned to the State House. MAS, which advocates on behalf of public schools and public students at the State House, is having its resolutions delegate assembly down in Hyannis in November. It will be four days after our next meeting. I would be more than happy to represent the Denet Puntin School Committee as your delegate to the resolution committee to help set our agenda moving forward with the State House at the level of MAS. I do have the resolutions in front of me, but as in the past, I ask that you allow me to vote my conscience on the resolutions at hand.
Does it make sense to... Do you wanna take a vote on that? Or do you not need that?
I need you guys to nominate me and elect me for me to actually have a vote at the delegate assembly.
Okay. Well, I would make that motion to nominate Jason to be our representative for the upcoming MAS.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to bring up that Resolution Number 1 is calling for the banning of polystyrene foam for schools by the 2022-2023 school year. It really stems from some of the conversations we've had as a school committee over the past five years in trying to move away from using styrofoam here at the Denet and moving to compostable trays. There are some laws already being passed around up at the State House right now looking to ban styrofoam from the state in totality. The environmental impacts of styrofoam is becoming more and more clear as time goes on. Polystyrene, when heated or exposed to acid, as contained in a lot of foods that are served on it and in it, can release the styrene into the food that you're consuming. And it's believed to be possibly a carcinogen. In addition to that, as it breaks down in the ocean, it becomes a magnet for other toxins in the water. The longer styrofoam stays in the ocean, the more poisonous it becomes to the aquatic life. And it breaks down into the little pearls that you can see, which look like food to the fish. So, if you're consuming anything from that biome, you most likely are also ingesting microplastics, including polystyrene yourself. So, we need to stop using it. And we're calling for the state to ban it from use in schools. And hopefully, the state in totality will ban it from use in the Commonwealth. So, thank you for giving me the courage to bring that work to the state level. It started here and now it might have implications across the Commonwealth.
Excellent. Says little Puntin can't take things off.
That's right.
Okay. And then, we did have some single signature warrants.
John came into our office on August 30th and signed seven warrants totaling $101,669. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'm sure we're missing Amy for a CASA update, but I do believe they have, is it not this weekend, but next weekend?
The Harvest Fair.
Harvest Fair. So, just throw that out there.
Mr. Benito, thank you very much. Your eyes are not deceiving you when you look at our enrollment. We are up to 220 students. Due in large part to a very large kindergarten. By our standards, very large. We do have some important dates coming up. September 30th will be Fall Pictures. October 14th is Columbus Day, No School. October 24th is an early release day. That's a 12:45 dismissal for parent conferences. October 25th, Grade 6 will be taking their field trip to Five Wits. And that night, CASA is also sponsoring the Halloween dance from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. So, the calendar looks a little thin right now, but I assure you, we're very, very busy.
Peter, this is the first time we've been with you since the beginning of school. And I'd just like to ask you to thank your staff for all the time that they put in over the summer, going to PD, setting up their classrooms.
Absolutely.
Making this school a welcoming environment for the students on day one. I know a lot of work goes into it behind the scenes. So, thank you very much and please pass that to your entire staff.
I will. Thank you.
Christine?
Thank you. The financials looking pretty good right now. Beginning of the year, we're doing all right so far. I want to let you know that anything that we can quantify and qualify, we have. So, we have them covered for all those funds. We've covered for our transportation contract, things like that, that we have some understanding of the dollars right now. One thing I do want to bring to your attention on the financial that you want to get to look at. On page 3 of the detail, the special education transportation line has a deficit of just under $11,000. That's what we know as of right now. One of our transportation situations changed significantly and that's created the situation. There is a very significant balance in the tuition account for special education because we're still confirming all of our in-house programs. So, none of those tuitions have been finalized. I expect that by the time we meet again that that will be taken care of and you'll see the true reflection on the financial. Excuse me. And autocratic vocational. We still have surpluses there because we have not... Well, I'm still confirming that everybody's attending where they're supposed to be attending and that all our transportation situations are working. We had some bumps in the road beginning of the year, but I believe that they're all set for right now. So, that should also be reflected on the next one's financial. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill?
So, we had quite a few things going on over the summer in terms of professional development for staff and curriculum development with staff members. We had curriculum mapping taking place at the high school for staff members to begin the backwards design process, especially for those groups who have not developed a scope and sequence that was aligned with newer state frameworks. So, a lot of people took advantage of that. In particular, history and social sciences were present. And elementary teachers participated. And I believe that the main focus was history and social science and science for elementary teachers if they went to that. So, there were two main groups represented from the elementary schools on the curriculum mapping. We also had a number of teachers participate in the Envision training over the summer, which was also paid for with Title II A funds.
And we had bestselling author Thomas Murray on opening day, district opening day for staff. We shared the cost with two other districts, Duxbury and Carver, to help defray the cost and to bring some programming that was related to our relationship building, but also creating an innovative culture to empower teachers and students. We will focus on integrating technology to meet the diverse needs of learners in February. And in your packet, you'll see a draft of our professional development schedule to date. I'm not going to read through all of these, but November will focus on, at the elementary level, the new Envision math program. And Dr. Nikki Newton will also be there for effective math strategies for, for staff. At the secondary level, it will be more of a focus on curriculum development using backwards design. And the Wellness Committee had established a number of goals at the end of last year, one of which was to expand the breakfast offerings to the high school, also to create school-based wellness cultures. In the past, what we have done is we've tried to provide wellness opportunities on district development days. We received feedback that a lot of staff members would like to do something more school-based, and some people have done that on their own, but some have expressed interest that the Wellness Committee helped with creating some ideas as to ways that they can do that in their own school culture as well. And then another thing we discussed was seeking outside funding or grant money, and we have since spoken with Christine to replace AEDs, Automated External Defibrillators. That's a hard one for schools. And so we're, we're looking at that. We're also making sure that whatever we purchase is consistent and compatible with the town. So it's just something that we're looking into as a possible funding source, and Nurse Beck and the nurses are working with me, and we're going to be sending information to Christine soon, hopefully to see if our insurance will help cover some of the cost.
Do those expire? Do they ever?
Yeah. So you'll also notice that I, I mentioned an early literacy grant on the memo. What I want to mention is that two districts are listed there, Halifax and Kingston. I wanted to mention that, Melissa has, has found a way to include Denet. So in part, these grants are sometimes based upon the size of a school, as to whether or not they're granted. And so Melissa has found a way to include Denet in the professional development that will be paid for by using Title I funds to make sure that Denet is included. And so that I wanted to note that because I think it's important to note that she's constantly thinking from a district perspective and making sure that there are equitable opportunities for our staff and for our students in terms of research-based practices and making sure our students have the very best. That brings me to Title I, Title II, and Title IV funds. You'll notice that Title I has decreased by over $100,000. Title II decreased by $16,000 since last year. Title IV received a little bit of a bump by $15,000. The reason why I'm mentioning this to you is because of our concern regarding the programming, such as elementary summer programming that's funded through Title I. And for Title II A, that is the primary source of our professional development funds that we use for, for speakers, to pay teachers for curriculum development, training on different resources, even the Envision math, although that was part of a package, but providing different opportunities for teachers to learn and grow and to make sure that our practices are the most up-to-date and most research-based. That's where we get that money from, and we, we just wanted you to be aware that we're noticing a trend to some substantial decreases there, so it may have an implication for our budget in the long run. And that was it for me. Did you have any questions on professional development or the progress report?
Question about the Skillful Teacher Workshop?
Yes.
Is that something that, is that sort of on teacher's own time after school? It's not a paid.
So what we do is it's, it's a contractual obligation. They have up to three years to take the course. We try to offer it as often as we can onsite. We offered it not last year, but the year before, and we will, we will offer it again in 2020 in the summer. So there are three summer days that teachers come in for if they are not paid. And then there are three or four half-days, I think, after-school days that teachers participate in. And that's something that was established, I don't know how many years ago.
I think I got it in the contract six-ish years ago.
And so it's, it's a great program, and it provides kind of common background for all teachers, common level of expectations, especially with the evaluation system that we have. It helps to prepare teachers and make sure that everyone is on, has a common language too in terms of those kinds of strategies.
Is that something that could be offered during the day? And do we know of any other districts?
So some, some do, some districts do, but it is six full days. And so I think the hesitation is that for some schools, if it's a year that a lot of your teachers are.
Have to get the subs.
Get the training done, it would, it would be very difficult to get that many subs and also expensive.
When I took the class, I think it was only four days, so they, I think they must have increased the, what's covered.
Thank you.
Jill? Jill, when you mentioned the cuts in Title I and Title II, can you just repeat those numbers for a second?
Sure. So Title I, do you want the exact numbers?
You can give the same numbers you gave, the rounded figures or exact, whatever you prefer.
So I'll give you specific, that way they can.
That'd be great.
So Title I received $2,005,586, which is a $117,977 decrease from the previous year. Title II A received $61,436, which was a $16,263 decrease.
And is that decrease amongst Union 31 and Silver Lake or here explicitly for the Denet?
That's combined.
So I just want to reiterate for the sake of not trying to be redundant, but drive a point home, that these are federal funds, and that what happens in Washington DC does affect our local schools here in Massachusetts and here in Plington. Jill just went through some fantastic professional development that she's been offering through, through her office that meets the needs of the districts, the schools, and the individual teachers. And just to know that what's going on in Washington DC puts that at jeopardy is a really sad state of affairs.
You basically have, when you put it all together, you're down 30%. 28 to 30%. That's a big cut.
Huge.
It's not, it's not a small number.
No, no, it will definitely impact our ability for some of school next year. I mean, you know, that's, that's what our main concern is at this point, is what we'll be able to do and offer. So it's sort of happening in real time. But you know, Title I are all direct services. That's how we've always used.
And that's where, that's where the biggest cut is. The other two offset from total funds coming in, but.
But who knows?
That's a full third of the cut.
Yep, but Title I is, is really a concern.
And that happened.
Thank you. Well, to continue on the sad news, this is Gail's last meeting. So I, I just wanted to thank Gail for her many years of service. I actually meant to look up, I lost track. I don't remember you not being.
I was aide at Denet, but 12 at Halifax.
Okay, there we go. So she's been with the district for a very long time, and she has always, always done a wonderful job and done whatever has been asked of her. Whenever you call the Denet, you can hear her lovely voice when she answers the phone. Gail has always been incredibly dependable and will do anything and roll up her sleeves at all that she's asked. And I know on a personal level, I will truly miss her. She has been a joy to work with and, and you know, definitely one of my go-tos if, if I need something. I can always depend on Gail. You sort of get those people in your life, you know, that you know if you want something, just they're the people to call because they're, they'll just do what you need. And Gail is one of those. So I, I will miss you terribly, so thank you.
Thank you.
So we also have a new office aide, Lucy, if you haven't met her, and she's doing a lovely job.
Been doing awesome.
And she's doing lovely. And Judy Hanson, Pete borrowed her permanently from Kingston Intermediate School. So she'll be coming over and she'll be starting, and she'll be lovely also. But I, I, I will personally miss you very much. So thank you, Gail, for all you've done.
Thank you.
You've been a joy to work with. Opening days, so as, as Jill mentioned, we had a great opening speaker. He did an excellent job. We had kids come and sing that were fantastic. So I don't believe, I told, did I tell you what happened at opening day? So I just, I love to tell kids stories, so this was awesome. So the middle school had the kids come from Wizard of Oz, which is one of my personal favorites. And luckily, they sang Summer of the Rainbow, which is another favorite. So they had me crying before I even got started. So the kids came, and this was after pretty much 500 staff got in line for one last hug. So I really started out a deficit. I was an emotional basket case before I even got started because, I mean, most everybody came through. I mean, they can tell you I was not looking good at that, but now some people cry and they look good, not me. It wasn't pretty, really just wasn't pretty. But anyway, so we get in and the kids did Wizard of Oz, and they were absolutely fantastic. Well, the elementary kids came up. And so Halifax and Kingston had students who had, were singing together, which was a first for us, the elementary school. And so they really hadn't had the chance to practice together, but they had learned both the same song. And Brenda Lassard from Halifax and George Bento, excuse me, from Kingston Intermediate School, where they are with the kids and, I don't know, 15, 20 kids maybe, something along those lines, came together, they all get up on stage, and they go first, right? Because elementary kids don't have the greatest patience to wait their turn, so they were on first. They get up there, they're looking great, they go to hit the button to play the music, and it sounds like Alvin and the Chipmunks. So something happened, they couldn't get the speed right. It was awful. So the poor kids are like looking, trying to figure out how to get started, and both the music teacher's eyes are this big, trying to figure out what to do. So they stop at, you know, up at the, at the top in the high school auditorium. They're fussing with the buttons, trying to figure out what to do. Played again, Alvin and the Chipmunks are singing again. So we're kind of sitting there, and I get up and I go up to the teacher, and they're like, kid, the kid's singing acapella. And she said, better than, than, than the Chipmunks. And so the kids sang acapella. They were phenomenal. They hadn't planned on singing acapella. These are kids from two different schools that didn't have an opportunity to practice together. We had two kids do solos. They were students, I think four through six would be my educated guess, because they were the chorus kids. And they were flawless. So I, I can't tell you how well they modeled being resilient and having a growth mindset, and just, they just did it in front of about 500 staff members, all their teachers. Their parents were in the background. It was pretty fantastic. So it really was a wonderful opening for, for all of us. So, and it was, it was definitely a pretty special moment. So I just wanted to share that with you. So you have, I know we try to sort of be paperless, but we do have our refrigerator magnets need here. So this year, we have a lovely orange, very fallish. For those of you who don't know, Lisa picks colors every year. So when we get our student numbers, our enrollment data, it will be on this lovely orange shade also. So this year, we are orange. And so this is our calendar, which has been approved. And then this is our school committee meeting schedule. The reason why this is helpful is, I know you probably have yours, I'm sure safely in your phone or wherever you keep them, but if we need to set extra meetings, it is helpful for you to just know sort of what some of the other obligations are, because both Mike and Jason have the great good fortune of getting to go to Silver Lake also. And then, you know, it, it just impacts all the other meetings. So that's pretty much all I have. Easy.
Great. Anything else? Nothing. Nice and efficient. All right, well, take the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank you very much, and have a good evening.